Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to the, uh... Ladies? Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Village Board meeting for September 12, 2019. At this time, I'd like to ask everybody to please stand for the pledge, and then remain standing for a moment of silence for our armed forces serving throughout the world. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This evening, we have a special guest, and I'd like to welcome Assemblyman Colin Schmidt. And if he would like to go up to the podium, he'd like to make a presentation.
Good evening, everybody.
You can take the mic out of the...
Can you hear me? I think. How's everybody doing today?
Very good.
Mayor, Board, I appreciate you taking a few minutes to allow me to, uh, to address the wonderful village.
Thank you.
We got a lot of great things going on in, uh, in the 99th Assembly District here in the village as well. We have a great working relationship with the local officials. Everybody in the public can know that, that, uh...I know I can reach your village board, and I certainly...they certainly know they can reach my staff and I at any time. I think that's critically important, especially as the ranking member of the Local Governments Committee, to be able to have that strong relationship with my local governments while I'm up in Albany, especially during legislative session. But on top of my legislative responsibilities and my constituent services responsibilities, I also view myself as an ambassador for our district. And I feel that it's important to bring attention to and highlight men and women who make contributions that go above and beyond for our local communities. I truly believe that not only is the village of Woodbury, but the entire now-united Assembly District is a great place to live, to work, to raise a family. And it's because of the people that reside here that are our neighbors. And many times, the paper and the news fail to highlight the great people that are in the district. They like to highlight the bad stuff. They like to highlight when someone does wrong or something that causes controversy, something that upsets people. But they don't like to highlight the positive. And part of my goal in the Assembly is to highlight the positive and the positive people who make you happy to say, "I'm from Woodbury. I'm from the 99th Assembly District." So Carol, could you, uh, please stand and, and join me up here? Come on up. I had, I had to pretend, I had to really act cold to her yesterday at the 9/11 memorial, so she, I didn't, like, screw up the surprise with her. Come on, come on.
And the camera's over there. Jeff, see if you can get this.
Oh, please. So, obviously, I know about you, but let me tell you that a lot of people in this community think very highly of you. So much so... So much so that your local officials have been working with my office to schedule this surprise for a little while now. And I'm gonna read off here into the record, and so everybody can hear just, uh, a few things that we put together. Uh, I have an official New York State Assembly citation. Everyone can see. We'll, we'll post for some pictures afterwards. But this is on behalf of 133,000 residents of the 99th Assembly District and all the residents of your village. Whereas this legislator takes great pride in recognizing and honoring individuals who dedicate their lives to serving others and improving their community, and whose character and achievements exemplify the ideals and values cherished by our state and nation. And whereas this legislator seeks to recognize individuals from the 99th Assembly District who have made significant contributions to their communities and are known for their diligence and conscious efforts to truly make a difference through civic, religious, educational, other community-based efforts. And whereas Carol Herb of the village of Woodbury is an individual dedicated to her community and who by her ongoing commitment to improve her community for the common good, and whereas Carol has displayed a conscientious effort to foster positive improvements for her community, focusing on the development of the greater good through serving as village tax collector for over 30 years, with being a volunteer on the PTA and the Woodbury Senior Center, Carol has also served as president of the Clerical Union and opened her home to foster children. And whereas such dedication and service, which are indeed the lifeblood of every great community, people, and state, merit and warrant special recognition, now therefore be resolved that I, Assemblyman Colin J. Schmidt, on behalf of all 133,000 residents of our great 99th Assembly District, seek to recognize you, Carol. On this date, witnessed therefore by Assemblyman Colin J. Schmidt with the official seal of the New York State Assembly. Congratulations.
Speech, speech, speak... There is no speech. I just absolutely love what I do, um, and it's nice to have someone think enough to recognize before, but it's not necessary. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So we should probably do something with the board?
That's a good idea, yeah.
That's why I want to get it. Wow, it's so emotional.
Oh, my God.
The emotions are running wild. And I didn't even know that Desiree was a foster kid.
She's adopted.
That would explain a lot.
Wait, wait, wait. I didn't get it.
All right, now let's get everybody in front of the board.
I'm sorry I had to lie to you. I'm sorry I had to...
Hi, Dora.
Come on.
Well, let's see. These two guys, David, you and I, you're okay.
That's okay. You can hold it.
Get the wear. Good?
Good.
Cool.
My belly. Thank you.
Congratulations.
You've got these to me, like, to be a record, huh? That's what I have to deal with?
I guess why I'm here?
Yeah, if you want to. If you want to tell, tell people what's going on.
Okay.
So people, so people know the backstory. I literally told Carol that we were honoring Desiree tonight. She had no clue. And she actually was able to keep a secret. That's the key.
Yeah, well, that's a surprise.
We pulled it off.
She had her phone ready.
Yeah, I saw her.
I saw it. I wasn't sure how I was gonna break the surprise, but when I saw her with the ca...I was like, you know what? At first, I wasn't necessarily gonna have her come up. I was gonna re...but then I was like, you know what? It's, this is, this is fair. So congratulations again. Well deserved. So I really not sure if there's any other update that I could give that's gonna surpass that, but I'll just give a quick rundown about what's gone on in the first nine months of my first term, what we're doing, what we're working on in the office, and obviously, I appreciate everybody's, uh, a few minutes of their time. So I took office as a freshman in January. I was named as ranking member of the Local Governments Committee, as I mentioned a little while ago, which allows me an extra-special focus on local government issues. So basically, any level of government below the state, my committee has specific focus on. In particular, I partnered with the mayor and the board to ensure that Woodbury was included in AIM funding, the village which, for some reason, is just never even included at all. And then on top of that, our county lost almost $4 million completely in AIM funding, which is aid sent to municipalities, that local money that assists our villages and towns, relieve the burden for taxpayers, for local taxpayers. So I was happy that, uh, working with, uh, our village leadership, we were able to get that fully restored in this year's budget. And there's also a long-term plan going forward. No promises based on some of our statewide leaders and how they operate, but, uh, we are prepared for that battle to come back around again in January. And, uh, we, again, we were successful this year, and I think we'll be successful again next year. We also were able to get full restoration of the extreme winter weather recovery funding, which is critically important. Anyone who drives on a single road in this village, town, or county understands potholes, the distress that erodes come under, especially because of the intense winter conditions. So I'm happy we were able to get that funding restored as well. In my freshman year, I was able to help pass 32 sponsored or co-sponsored pieces of legislation, which is, um, uh, pretty good for anybody, but especially a, a freshman. We ranged on topics from local legislation here in the town of Woodbury regarding the hotel motel tax to larger items that are statewide focus. There is, um, the Freed Family from Harriman, just, just a couple miles down the road, who lost a young daughter, and they started a statewide effort for child safety legislation. And I was proud to be a co-sponsor of that and ensure that it passed both chambers this year, along with the state senator and a couple of other state assembly members. We were able to get that done, and the governor signed off on it this year. So it's nice to see, especially for young children in the community. There's additional security, uh, measures now in place through this legislation to protect our young children. Different, uh, initiatives on, um, uh, for, uh, women's equality, women's rights, veterans, mental health. There, there really is a, 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 a long list that we were able to accomplish. I know most of the times you hear the stuff that's controversial, that we don't like, that we don't like to see, that makes the news, but we, we do work, and my office does try to work 24/7, if and when necessary, which a lot of times it's late hours, early mornings, but to deliver for constituents and work on legislation that matters. We have an event coming up on the 16th, so that's this upcoming Monday. Invite everyone to come out to. It's our Salute the First Responders Award Night. So I've launched four pillars of the community event throughout the year. Women in Distinction, Students of Achievement, Salute the First Responders, which is coming up. And then we're gonna have a Veterans Hall of Fame, which we'll be putting information out on coming up in the wintertime. Basically, the same premise of honoring Carol. We want to honor men and women in our community who have not sought recognition, but deserve recognition and deserve positive recognition. So I would invite everyone to come out on this Monday, the 16th, at 6:30 PM at the Orange County Emergency Services Center. We'll be honoring, so, individual from the village, individual from the town, as well, 17 overall awardees who are first responders in our community who have gone above and beyond the call of duty to, to really help and provide services some in extreme circumstances. Yeah, government event, 6:30 PM. We'd appreciate everybody coming out for that. A couple of the initiatives that we're still working on, and proud that we were able to deliver the permanent property tax cap in this year's budget. I led the efforts on that in the New York State Assembly. We're also working on that unfunded mandate relief. I, I, I can feel the, uh, the heat looking on me from the local officials on that, but we do need to pair that with unfunded mandate relief to relieve the burden on our local taxpayers. We also have the New York Tax Relief Act, which is an eight-bill package that I've introduced, that the, the top plank was the permanent property tax cap, so we're able to achieve that. And we have seven other pieces of legislation that would include unfunded mandate relief for the towns, counties, and villages, as well as the very popular senior property tax freeze, which has garnered bipartisan support across the state. We've received a significant number of, uh, signature sign-ons from our district to help advocate for that. And it would create a system where those who reach a certain golden age, who have lived here, worked here, built up their communities here in the Hudson Valley and the state of New York, would be locked into a rate that's more affordable than, uh, what they might be dealing with year after year with increases and prevent those future increases. And, uh, the goal is to ensure that nobody who has created this great community has to be forced out once they're on a fixed income in retirement. We, uh, holding, uh, the, the governor accountable is a big piece of it. I know that's particularly important here in the village of Woodbury. Many times, I could say there's not much agreement between our district and the governor on almost any particular subject. I think it's critically important to hold him accountable every chance that we get. One of the things that popped up, obviously, recently is this license plates fiasco, where they wanna charge us $25 to get a new license plate, and then $20 to keep the same fee that we want. So basically, $45 you gotta pay so that the governor can give you a new license plate. It's outrageous. There's no need to charge that amount of money. In the current law, the commissioner of DMV can set a rate that's $25 or less. The governor says, "Well, $25, so I'm gonna charge the maximum." We're asking that they eliminate that to zero, or the minimum, just the cost of production of the license plate, which is nowhere near $25. And we're also considering the governor probably will not want to do the right thing. We were also co-sponsoring numerous pieces of legislation which will eliminate that fee. And so, "No, you can't do it, Governor. Sorry." We, uh, we're also, uh, working on some...the village is very, uh, familiar with the village creation process. That's been an ongoing, hot-on topic of concern in our immediate region. Proud to introduce the first piece of legislation that deals with the village creation process and really modernizing that, ensuring that it can only be done for just purposes and not used by any person or a group of people to do harm to the greater area that they might be trying to seek, that village. So that proposal, there is a couple other proposals by numerous members of the legislature that came after that. So we're hoping, over the course of the next couple of months, when session starts in January, that there might be some negotiation and all the different areas of the state can come to an agreement of what should the modern village creation process look like for a modern era. So that's some of the stuff that we're working on. We are, our, oh, our new district office is in Washingtonville. Recently relocated there. That's kinda pinpoint center of the district, so everyone can get to us in equal time, and we can get to everyone in equal time. I thought that would be pretty important. So ease of access to our government services. We're on Sixth Depot Street. Most people know the Corner Candle Store over there. That seems to be a prominent landmark that people know. Right next to the pharmacy as well in Washingtonville. Encourage everyone, normally open nine to five Monday through Friday, but you might see me, the dog, or at least the staff there, much different hours than that. And we're, and we try to be out as many things as possible. If I cannot be there because of army duty, you'll probably see Jenna or one of our other great staffers who are dedicated to the Assembly District. So we certainly encourage everyone here in the audience, listening. The board knows. I get those messages. We got something going on. Come on down. We'll be here more than happy to participate. It's, it's my privilege as a state assemblyman, so. On that, I don't know if there's any questions or specific other items you'd like me to kind of...
Uh, you may just want to give the phone number of your office, because, uh, people may, you know, watch it on the, uh, YouTube, or, so they'd have a number to call your office.
I think we're gonna make our, our ratings, uh, record tonight.
Our ratings are gonna go up.
I'm telling you. Absolutely. So the office number is 845-469-6929. You can also get our government website, Assemblyman Colin Schmidt. Google that. It's easier than telling you the whole URL, because the way the state does things. So just Assemblyman Colin Schmidt, click that first link, and we have the email address. And it's, uh, it's schmitzey@nyassembly.gov. But we don't make you go through that annoying form that a lot of the government websites do now. You can actually ping right to my phone. Doesn't matter. 3:30 in the morning, something happens, that email goes right to my phone. If it's really urgent, call 911. They'll call your Assemblyman's office. But, uh, we'll respond to it as, as quick as we possibly can, for sure. We, we certainly encourage everyone, especially on constituent issues. I'll just say this. We've had some people reach out that, "Well, I, I feel embarrassed. This isn't that important," or... That's not true. Doesn't matter. If it's important to you, it's important to me. We had a lady a couple weeks ago reach out. She had a dead squirrel in her pool. We have people that reached...so we have from that to people reaching out, obviously, with healthcare issues, veteran status issues, anything in between. There's nothing too small. There's nothing too big. We're more than happy to help out, figure a solution. Just call. That's what we're there for. No judgment. We're happy to help. It's a, it's an honor to do so, and I just, I certainly, it is an honor. Last nine months, I've been an honor to represent the village and the entire Assembly District. Have a great staff, and we wake up every morning, "How can we help?" Might not be able to change the whole state overnight. I wish, wish we could. But, um, even those little, little wins each day make it worthwhile that we keep going, keep fighting for every resident of this village, every resident of the, the 10 towns and eight villages that I'm blessed to represent. And, and that's the mentality I keep. That's the mentality I work to have my staff keep, is that public service is a privilege. That's how we truly feel. And we're gonna keep doing that every day, seven days a week for the rest of the term, so.
Well, very good. Well, thank you, Assemblyman Colin Schmidt, and thank you for stopping by.
Appreciate it, absolutely.
And again, congratulations to Carol Herb for the award she won.
Yes. Well deserved, Carol. Congratulations. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyway, that was a nice surprise tonight, especially for Carol, so. So, anyway, congratulations again. Okay, we're gonna move on to, uh, business, so, uh, motion to accept the minutes of our meeting held August 22nd, 2019.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Des, could you please read abstract number seven?
Abstract number seven contains vouchers 190532 through 190638 in totals $627,106.14.
Thank you. Motion to approve abstract number seven.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint Christopher Riley and Scott Henderson to the positions of motor equipment operators, MEOs, at an hourly rate of $26.30 and a start date of September 16, 2019. One appointment is to fill the vacancy caused by the retirement of Scott Canfield, and the other is a new position.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to accept the application received from Kenneth Presti as a member of Highland Mill's Fire Company.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next up, a motion to approve fire department equipment request, 2019-10, totaling approximately $1,180.59 for the purchase of a gas sniffer and a laptop. And 2019-11 totaling approximately $832.60 for the purp...purchase of, uh, 20 PPE hoods.
I'll make that motion.
It's easier to say. Um, I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Old business. We had a bid opening, uh, on September 10, 2019, at 2 PM. Bid notice printed in the New York, um, sorry, the Times Herald Record. I was gonna say the New York Times, but... It was the Times Herald Record on August 13, 2019, for the purchase of a 2020 Ram 1500 Tradesman Quad Cab for the Water and Sewer Department. Only one bid was received from Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram of Warwick in the amount of $32,295, and adding $190 for the optional 5.7 LE torque engine, which is supposed to be, save money on gas, because what exactly is it turning?
It's supposed to save, it's normally about $2,000. They're giving it for, to us for $190, and it's supposed to save gas for traveling around local roads, which is what most of our, whatever sort of vehicles do.
So motion to accept, excuse me, an award the bid received from Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram of Warwick.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
New business. Um, notice was received on August 29, 2019, that Kinton Reman?
Ramen.
Ramen.
Ramen, like the noodles.
He is, he, he's rich. He doesn't eat ramens.
I don't eat ramens.
He didn't go to college?
He didn't go to college.
I did go to college, but I didn't eat ramens. I went home to eat. At 498 Red Apple Court, Unit 197, Central Valley, is applying for a liquor license from the New York State Division of Alcohol Beverage Control, State Liquor Authority. A letter was sent to the police department to determine if there's any reason why the village should object, uh, to this application being approved. And they stated they have been, there have been no significant incidents that would prohibit the application. So Desiree, could you please send the appropriate paperwork to State Liquor Authority?
I'll do.
Thank you. Excuse me. Motion to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Orange County for the contract of snow and ice removal on certain county roads for the 2019-2020 season at a rate of $4,800 per mile.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, resolution, the WIIA grant submission. No, anyway. Uh, motion to adopt the resolution presented approving the submission of the grant application and executing a grant contract with the Environmental Facilities Corporation for grant funding through the Water Infrastructure Improvement Act, WIIA, for elevating the village of Woodbury's wellhouse number one.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have a little technical difficulty up here. We're gonna work through it. This one right here?
Yeah.
Can you make it bigger?
Yes, I can make it bigger.
Thank you.
Not bigger?
That's good. Motion to adopt a resolution approving the submission of a grant application and executing a grant contract with the Environmental Facilities Corporation for grant funding through the Water Infrastructure Improvement Act, WIIA, for the new well supply source, Legacy Ridge, along Trotbrook Road.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
We need it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next up, I have another resolution, motion to adopt the resolution presented concluding review for environmental impacts under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, CECA, associated with the development of the new well supply source, Legacy Ridge, along Trotbrook Road.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I apologize for the confusion up here tonight. Okay, Resolution 17 Forward 86, support. So a motion to adopt the resolution presented in support of upgrading Route 17 in Orange and Sullivan Counties to Interstate 86.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, that does conclude our business for this evening. So with that, I'm gonna go out to the public. Anybody in the, uh, second row? That's the third row. But we'll get to it. Anybody in the third row? You, you have to come up to the mic. Come on, you're famous now.
Say, state your name.
Please come up to the mic.
Come on, you.
Do I have to close the mic?
Yes.
If they can't hear you on the radio.
You've been in local government, you asked.
You could've went over to Rob, but...
Yeah. You wanna sit here?
My name is Carol Herb, and I want to thank the board for how hard it must have been to decide to honor me with this amazing award that I thought was for Desiree. I'll, you know, the stuff to future is okay. I'll, I'll forget about that. But I do thank you very much. It is an honor. I appreciate it very much. I love everything I've done, so it's like being given a gift, something that you just had fun doing. Thank you.
Well, thank you and congratulations. Anybody else in the third row?
John Smith, Highland Mills. There are two issues I'd like to make a comment on, is, one is the dispute between the village and the town. There are certainly no winners in this issue, but there are certainly a number of losers, and those are the taxpayers in Woodbury. I understand it's up to over $130,000, maybe more, I'm not really sure what the numbers are, they're higher, as you indicate, but we pay the bill on both sides of the tables, so, you know, there's nothing to gain, or whatever. I would just like to suggest that maybe the two attorneys, or whatever, could go into arbitration, or some sort of meeting that would finally bring this thing to a close. Mr. Hunter at the town board meeting didn't mention something about going, they were in a discovery phase, and maybe you could make a comment about that, and let us know what that really means, or what stage we're at, like that. Second comment that I would like to make is about an article that appeared in the record regarding the sewage and the sewage treatment plant at Harriman, and all of the expected sewage that's gonna come from all the HACIDS over there in Monroe and Palm Tree and all over the place over there, whatever they call themselves, you know, the different villages and towns that they're establishing now. You may recall that there was a woman here from some company or some organization, either it was last spring or last year, and she gave some comments regarding the issue and so forth like that. I think she missed the point. I got up and I said, "We're not interested in what you're doing with your plans, projects, if you're gonna ship it to Delaware, or into Windsor, or wherever you wanna ship it, we're interested in how much is this gonna cost us." And I wish Mr. Schmidt would've stayed, I've already been to see her on the issue, I'll bend it again, that's for sure, and we should be proactive to make sure we're not getting screwed in any way, and I don't even know if the HACIDS are metered with all the sewage they send over there to Harriman at this point, anyway, but certainly something has to be done so that we're treated fairly, and we're not screwed by Como and the other people up there in the state government. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the third row? I respond to some of that, from what I know, as far as the lawsuit, I wanna make it clear, it's the town that's suing the taxpayers of Woodbury, it's not the village. Lawsuit can end tomorrow, Frank picks up the phone and tells his attorney, drop the lawsuit. The village is only defending itself. We've spent about almost, close to 50,000, town's probably in the area of 150-plus. You gotta ask yourself the question why they're spending three times as much as us, but usually they have two or three attorneys in anything we do. We have tried arbitration, we've had several meetings with the town board and the village board, right in this room. You know, they made certain demands, we agreed to two of them, we wouldn't agree to two others, so, you know, we're willing to work with them. I mean, the real issue here is, they didn't even call us before bringing a lawsuit, okay? They just, we just basically got hit with a lawsuit, you know? I mean, and I totally agree with you, there is no winner here. The taxpayers are getting screwed royally, big time, 'cause no matter who wins, they win, we win, doesn't really matter what changes. Now, that land up there's been a highway department since I can remember, so I mean, I don't understand, you know, what they're angling for. This, I think, is more about, you know, Frank didn't want it to happen when he was on the town council, he voted against it, and it's just his way, you know, of being vindictive. And he started this lawsuit, he got the town councilmen all worked up, there was nothing. You know, we gave them 130 acres of land, they have the parks. I mean, the land we gave them, which they think is worth nothing, we gave them the water, the dog park is on the land we gave them, the animal shelter is on the land we gave them, the pavilion is on the land we gave them, the parking lot is on the land we gave them, the beach is on the park, on the land we gave them, the playground, the bocce court. I mean, I don't understand how he thinks, you know, that's not worth anything, but anyway. As far as discovery, we did depositions, and I mean, I'm not sure what's going on now, I know I had to sign another affidavit, but it looks like it's gonna go to trial, and the bills are just gonna go up and up and up and up. So, in the reality of this, this is the most stupidest ludicrous lawsuit in the history of litigation, and you know, you can only thank the town board for this, 'cause, you know, we were always willing to sit down and talk with them, but, you know, the last time they basically, you know, it's all about money to them, they wanted money, they wanted money from us. Well, guess where we get our money from? Think about it. So, I mean, I don't, I don't know how they, you know, at the end of the day, I don't own this chair I'm in, I don't own these stairs, I don't own anything in here that belongs to the taxpayers, so I don't understand why this is even an issue. The only thing that changed was control, we had the highway department, technically, that shit had came over to us, and if we were dealing with normal people, that would've came over, because that was the highway department, that was part of it. So, the fact that we're actually going through this lawsuit, like I said, it's insane. Sewage, yes, well, we've been dealing with this for quite some time, that's been a big argument for a long time about making sure everybody is paying their fair share, and one of the, one things we were pushing for the longest time, and, you know, we've been promised this for years, and supposedly they're getting close, but meters, all our sewage is metered, we just feel everybody's sewage should be metered. It goes back to that, you know, good walls make good neighbors, well, good meters make good neighbors, because everybody's paying their fair share. Listen, we're approaching the 85, we're over the 85%, which requires the county to start the process of getting ready to find a solution for the increased capacity. They're looking to take the Harriman plant, which is 6 million gallons per day, and expand it to 9 million gallons per day, and that's gonna cost in the area of $50 million, and I think that's a low number, okay, to be honest with you. They don't even know if they can do that. They might have to actually pipe sewage to New Windsor or to Goshen area, where they could expand the plant up there, or they could put it right into the Hudson. Now, that's gonna be a 5 million gallon per day plant, for 172 millions, and I think that's a low number. These numbers are gonna go higher, take my word for it, and that's gonna take a long time to do. And even if they did it down at Harriman, they got the okay to expand it to 9 million gallons a day, that's gonna take, you know, two or three years to accomplish that. So, we've been proactive on this for a long time, actually going to meetings, fighting on this, and, you know, pushing, and one of the big, the two big concerns for the longest time have been governance of this, because right now, all the Orange County legislators vote on it, and you know, probably 15 of them don't give a hoot, because their communities are not in the Orange County Sewer District, so they don't care. I'm not, I'm not saying that in a mean way, but they have no vested interest, even though their county legislators, they should represent the whole county, not just their district, but we know how politicians are. The other thing is, everybody paying their fair share. Now, if you go by what the paper said today, the 3 million gallons per day expansion is gonna be eaten up by the expansion of KJ, you know, nothing against them, but you know, here's the issue, well, why should like the Village of Harriman be paying for more capital improvements on the sewage plant, when they're not growing? I mean, they're basically grown, you know? So, those are the issues that have to be addressed now. I think the governance, it's always gonna be the county, I mean, it's ridiculous to think that politicians from different municipalities are gonna govern this thing, that's never gonna happen, and it probably wouldn't work, might work for a day or two, but, you know? And the other thing is, I think that has to be worked out, and I brought this issue up several times, and even just a month ago, I brought it up when I was up at a meeting at the county center, and they agreed with me, they understand it, and they're working to come up with a fair and equitable way to distribute the cost, but these costs are coming, there's no way around it, so, I don't know what to tell you other than that, but sewage is very expensive, and it's only gonna get more expensive, so. I mean, Woodbury right now, I mean, we have, I think, like 150,000 gallons per day available to us, capacity, but I mean, the problem is, it's co-mingled down in that plant, and Orange County Sewer District, number one, has always had a policy of first come, first served. So, even though I have, I've paid the capital, I shouldn't say I, but people of Woodbury, have paid the capital on, you know, 1.3 million, 3 million gallons a day, we still haven't used that full capacity yet, but they could turn around and tell me one day, "Well, the plant's done, we're full, no more, you know, hookups," even though we're entitled to more hookups, but this is the world we live in, and then obviously we'd have to sue the county, get our money back and all this stuff, but that doesn't solve the problem. So, I hope I answered your question. Anybody else in the third row? Yes?
You got into my favorite subject, so.
Sewage?
Water and sewer are my favorite things. Chris Graziano, Highland Mills. A couple of things I wanna bring up, one, you just mentioned that really, really twerked something in me, which got me a little aggravated, is, when you have capacity reserved, that capacity should be for the person who reserved it and paid for it. So, that should be something that should be insisted on, that's how sewage capacity works throughout, everywhere. The fact that they wanna, this first come, first served thing should not work that way, so I agree with you 100%, that should be demanded, capacity is reserved and paid for, that capacity should be the village's perpetuity. Secondly, the option of moving the sewage to New Windsor and whatnot, I can tell you for a fact, that would go, that would take decades to do because of the legal fight that would wind up, because that sewer plant discharges into the Rampou River, and that's a huge amount of flow that goes down the Rampou watershed, not only to Rockland County, not to several water utilities in Rockland County, but also to New Jersey. So, that 6 million gallons out of that Rampou watershed would be a huge, huge issue for people downstream of that watershed, so.
They'll still get their 6 million gallons, I'm talking about, any additional capacity could be going to New Windsor at a plant that'd be discharged into the Hudson River.
Alright, 'cause I was reading things that they might close this plant and ship it all.
I don't think they're gonna close that plant, based on what you just said, that too many municipalities are depending on that water.
That's correct, so, that's another thing I wanted to clear up, is that, that has to keep that river alive, so. But I, again, like I said, any sewer capacity that you guys have reserved, I would definitely preserve your rights on that.
We'll try it. Anybody else? Okay, Rob, you have anything? Andrew?
I just, I just wanna add to what the mayor said, John, about this litigation, just to go back a little bit, what we tried to do initially was to sit down with both boards in a public forum here at Village Hall, to try to work through this, because it was ridiculous to begin with this litigation, we're not paying for it out of pocket, the taxpayers of Woodbury are. We tried in a public forum, the supervisor had promised us a cost analysis of what they've spent on the litigation, that never came, that never happened. What did happen was his request to move this from a public forum to a private forum. It was during that private forum that the supervisor requested that we pay, that we could settle this by just giving him a million dollars. Now, the mayor announced that at the last meeting, so, quite honestly, the million dollars does not come out of our pocket personally, though it all does come out of our pocket as taxpayers. So, I don't know where he thinks that money will come out of everybody's pocket, okay? It doesn't make any sense, because at the end of the day, it's all our lands, we're all one Woodbury. So, this, you know, this relationship between the town and the village has been on a downward slide pretty much since January 1st, 2018, okay? So, you can connect the dots on where that went wrong. Also recently, what's been going on with this litigation, 'cause we're in election season now, or election, election season now, so, they have, they have tried on social media to pile this, all, the current litigation against the village and the taxpayers of Woodbury, with the litigation that Highland Lake Estates has against the town, or the supervisor, and the police department, okay? Just to compare the two, Highland Lake Estates is a private entity, they pay for their litigation against the tax, you know, against the police and the supervisor through HOA fees. They do not, now, they're all elected, if the residents of Highland Lake Estates were not happy with the board, they would vote them out, and they have not done that, okay? But, they're trying to say, "Well, you're okay with HLE suing us, but why aren't you okay with the town suing the taxpayers of Woodbury?" Well, we're not, okay? He's an elected official, he decided to use taxpayer money to sue the taxpayers of Woodbury, and it's, he's not discriminating with this lawsuit, okay? So, doesn't matter if you're straight or part of the LGBTQ community, you're getting sued by the supervisor. Doesn't matter if you're a man or a woman, you're getting sued by the supervisor. Doesn't matter if you have a dog or a cat, you're getting sued by the supervisor. I could do this all day, okay? He, that's the bottom line. To me, this is the most ridiculous thing, okay? Because regardless, the highway department land we needed, okay? If we don't have that land, the highway department is part of the entire community here, it's necessary, so, why would this have been a problem? And what I think irks me more than anything is putting a price tag on the rez, okay? It's beautiful up there, that was what sold me on moving to Woodbury, okay? To say that the land we gave him does not equate to the 5 to 10 acres that we got from the highway department is ridiculous, because it's just drop dead gorgeous there. It is probably what sold many people to move here, and what he is basically saying, the supervisor, is, "Well, that's not valuable." It's not, you know, it is valuable, it's priceless in my opinion, so, for him to try to put a number on this is ridiculous, and for him to try to log, you know, put this together with HLE is ridiculous as well, because at the end of the day, I don't know the particulars of their litigation, and I'm sure there's a financial component, but that's not the only component, okay? With this lawsuit, this is all about money, it's strictly about money. He, three things, non-conforming fence, he literally sued the taxpayers of Woodbury to protect the taxpayers of Harriman, okay? He out and out said that, and finally, it is about money, and I think that's the paramount thing here, and if I could take it a step further, what is the most litigious municipality in Orange County, okay? And it's almost like, the page was ripped out of the playbook and brought here to Woodbury, because he sued the taxpayers of Woodbury. He dumped the most important department, I feel, in Woodbury, which is our building department, our planning, water, zoning board, was basically evicted, okay? And then, I don't even get me started with the whole consolidation angle, okay? Because we're now on year 12 of talking about how the village should be gone, okay? And what happens if the village is gone? There'll be 20 other villages behind it, so, if it smells like a duck, quacks like a duck, and feels like a duck, it is a duck. So, that's all I gotta say. And in the meantime, September 29th, everybody's invited to St. Patrick's Church, they're having their third annual parish picnic, you do not have to be Catholic to attend. So, Carol, you could prance around with your, you know, your award showing off, and you're more than welcome as a Methodist to be there. Lutheran, excuse me, Lutheran Methodist. It's all to say. Thank you, guys.
Thomas?
I absolutely can't follow that, but I will agree that I think the lawsuit is a waste of taxpayers' money. I've said it before, I'm the one who brought up the idea that they should assess and look at the value of the reservoir compared to the value of the property where the highway department is. Not saying it's not valuable, however, I think a pristine lake with a waterfall... However, I think a pristine lake with a waterfall surrounded by a mountain is probably worth a lot of money. I think they originally came at what, they thought it was worth around $65,000, if I remember.
No, like, 1.2 million, I don't know. They did a cost analysis on it, I mean...
The first, the first thing they said when they were in a meeting. So, anyway, I have nothing else. Thanks, Mike.
Okay. Desiree, you have anything? You can do it. Thank you.
On a lighter and more civic, community-minded topic, the Woodbury Lions Club will be holding their annual yard sale at the St. Patrick's Church, which is also open to all denominations, on September 21. I believe the sale starts at 10:00 A.M.
10:00 to 3:00.
There are almost or over 50 vendors that are gonna be there,